Okay, I call the Town of Northwood Planning Board meeting for May 24th, 2018 to order at 6:35 PM. Members present. Beth Woodrow.
I shouldn't have looked at you.
Yeah, I know. Joe McCaffrey.
Oh, come on.
I know, it's a day.
Betty Smith.
Betty Smith. Vice Chair Lee Baldwin. I don't know.
Town staff is sufficient.
Town staff is sufficient because I'll never remember your names.
No worries.
I've only been doing this for, what, nine years now? Okay, voter designation is all members present. Minutes?
Move to accept minutes.
Is that counting?
You're saying four because we have a couple here that are on... Is that what you said, minutes? Well, I mean, is that what you're doing? Because there is... Are we... We just have the one, the 24th?
Just the one, the May 10th.
10th, I'm sorry. Yeah. Okay. I saw another set, that's why I was asking.
Oh, I think when you were... You weren't here the last time.
Yes. Hey, I can quit.
My apologies.
Want your chair back?
Uh, no.
No. Fine.
Bob Strobel arrived.
Bob Strobel arrives at...
You have to speak Latin.
6:37?
6:37. I can't see the clock with these glasses on.
And was added to the voting designation?
Yes, and he has added to the voting designation.
Keep going.
And we had a... We have a... Oh, and a second to do the minutes, so... Anything on page one? That... You may read that, too.
Thank you.
Everybody seems to be wanting something else.
No, go ahead.
Nothing on page one? Page two?
Uh, we have on line 31, just addition of an H. For what?
I forgot your name.
Skey.
Michalinski.
Justin.
Michalinski. Mr. Michalinski has arrived at 6:40?
40.
And is added to the voting designation.
I think Linda had something on line 31.
Line 31, Linda?
The typo.
Oh. Yes.
What the...
Just a typo. We got it.
Page two?
Page two, I have a... I'm going to need to fire a... I'm doing this. Just a clarification on... It's the bottom of the page. It's case 18-04.
Mm-hmm.
And bottom of the page, it says, let's see...
Which line?
Hmm?
Which line?
Well, it's the very last sentence. It's line 38. Let's say it starts, "The current recommendations are only related to changes to the plan..." Well, actually, it's the following sentence. "He stated that the applicant has a full plan of the entire camp and are willing to come in and file a major site plan that they could do future amendments to cases like this," I guess, so...
I would suggest, because I think I know where you're going with this. On line 39, change, "He stated that the applicant has a full drawing."
Right. Okay. Because he's referred to... He's referred to two different things. I wasn't there, so I didn't hear all this, but...
Makes sense.
So you're saying drawing would be more reflective of the previous part of the discussion?
Right. Correct me if we...
My understanding is that the applicant does have something that is essentially a master plan of the site, that they would be able to come in and submit as a major site plan, so that we would essentially have something covering the entire site that we would be making campsite-specific amendments to in the future.
But it's not... That's not the case?
It's a map, a drawing map. I think the idea was, that's what they have now, and at the future, when they come in, to do other changes, at that point, that they will...
Oh, I'm not referring to anything they've submitted.
Correct.
My understanding was that they have a document of their own that we have not seen.
Exactly, and that was my point, and that's why I brought it up, was the confusion over the plan, because I like...
Really? I just wanted to be a little clearer, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think a drawing or a map clarifies it a little better.
Okay. The word "plan" has legal connotations, and I didn't want to have that muddied there. Does that answer your question at all?
Yeah, I think that's good.
Okay.
Altered slightly there for drawing.
You're still chairing.
Okay. Page three? I don't need to... No. I'm in stereo now.
That's... This letter...
I'm thinking.
There is that letter. Says the same thing.
Watch out for those pen leaks. Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
Seconded, and we went over it, and now we vote?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All in favor of accepting the minutes as the late amendments, the typo and board fix? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed? Well, everybody said aye, so there's really a lot of opposition.
I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining because you weren't there. Yes. So... Five?
10.
Five and 01. Oh. That's not mine. That's your property.
Thank you. Vice Chair?
You can take over now.
Take over. So we have our first case of the night, 17-12. Brianna Moynihan-Sienkowicz of 321 First New Hampshire Turnpike. Thank you. Hang on, one second first. Looking for the letters list. Oh. Okay. Sorry. There it is. I see it. Okay. We had a chance to look at this at the... Two weeks ago, and I agree at all. I don't think we are... There's anything outstanding from... As far as the package goes, so at this point, I'd entertain a motion for acceptance.
Mr. Chair, this is... 17-12 is the hearing on compliance with conditions.
Sorry.
So this has already been approved?
Yes, thank you.
The board rendered a decision at its November 30th meeting for approval with conditions, and those conditions were that we add hours of operation to the site plan. I believe the applicant did that that night.
Yep.
The... That we receive written confirmation from New Hampshire DOT District 6 acknowledging the change of use or providing an updated driveway permit. We have received that.
Okay.
The third item was a letter from a licensed septic designer confirming that the existing septic design can accommodate the proposed change of use. You should all have in front of you a copy of the letter that we received, and it was slightly different from what we typically receive from the septic engineers. In this case, it was not so much confirmation that the system could handle the proposed change in use because we weren't able to locate a state-approved septic design. Instead, what they gave us was load calculation comparing the proposed use with the prior use of record. In this case, they indicated that the barbershop would expect it to be a lower load than the prior use of record, but if the applicant were to continue to use the residential apartment that is also part of that building, that they would not be able to guarantee that the load was less than the load of the prior approved uses. So since that letter was sufficiently different from what we were expecting, staff didn't feel comfortable accepting this administratively. We thought that this was a decision that required some discretion, which is why we're back before you tonight.
First of all, my apologies. I read the case, and I did not read the second sentence of the case, and it's been a very long day, so... Okay. If I do my math correctly...
There's a little more info than just the letter to kind of give you a little...
Okay. Sure.
The... We can only use the past use of the property that was known to me.
Right.
In that time, it was mostly being used outside of what it was allowed to be used for. So even up until the point that the building was purchased in October, it was still being used. Outside of that use was multiple occupants that were affected around the time of closing. So the... The other aspect of this is the system that's on file with the state is not taking into consideration the changes that were approved by the town in... When they did a repair permit, when the original owner did the repair permit. So the town viewed those changes and saw them as acceptable, which actually puts the system in compliance, but at the time, they weren't required on a repair order... Did that one?
Trying to...
Does it help? On the repair order that the state doesn't come out and view it, so they can't use that information. In addition to that, barbershops don't have their own classification, so the state created a classification for barbershops, which still considers the use of regular hair wash stations, which we specifically don't have.
Mm-hmm.
So we've kind of been in an odd situation on how to go about handling this, because the designer can see, looking at it, he's like, everything it fits, but it doesn't fit with what's on file with the state. Furthermore, the designer feels very comfortable that they could design a system and we could put it on file that would meet the requirements of the property and the future use of the property without having to request a variance from the neighbors, as previously was going to be needed for other businesses that came in. Oh, God, I'm echoing.
I guess they both work, Karen.
We'll separate them for a bit, so... Okay. Be good? So, that's kind of where we are. So the... We also had a full inspection done of the system, which determined that the system, even in its multiple years of illegal use, has never even run high, because we had to crack the tank, and it shows your levels. So part of our plan would be that we would put a... You know, put a plan on file with the state and also have it inspected yearly to make sure that we're, you know, staying within those limits, and we'd also have a water test on every year, just because the well and the septic are outside of the required areas, but if... That would be a good indication if there was a problem prior to ever backing up.
Okay.
A lot of information on that one.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
Can I ask...
Chair?
Just if you're thinking of something, or... Just to really reinforce what you said, I think I followed, but in case I didn't. I understand that this... There is no plan on... There was no plan, is no plan on file, but the... This...
So there's... There's a plan on file, but it's not a standard plan. So the state does know it exists, and they haven't...
Because it wasn't filed with them, yeah.
Right, because it was filed with them initially, but the change is made to make it better.
But the changes were done locally, inspired... The town required that? Is that what your understanding is?
I can explain that if you'd like.
That's fine with me. Go ahead, Linda. Just because I wanted to... Just clarification.
I'm going to explain the... A little bit of the history of it, because I look back through the property file. There is a plan that shows a drywall that's in the back of the property that was the original... We believe the original septic for the house that was on that location, there was a house there. The house was taken down when the commercial building was put in. It was in 1986. There is a repair order that was done, because apparently at that time, shortly thereafter, the system was not operating properly. So the health officer went out, and there's just a hand-drawn plan that shows a pipe coming from the building to the drywall. But there is a Town of Northwood Health Officer repair order saying that they allowed someone to go out and repair the system back in 86. There's nothing... Or 87. There's nothing since that time. There was never a state-approved system. It went from a residential system that was on the lot from many years ago prior to state approval.
Well, so this is still a drywall, an original drywall that's been modified?
So it is, um... This is the picture you're talking about that helps you. So it's a 1,000-gallon septic tank with a 2,000-gallon drywall, which arguably, when you talk to any of the septic people, and even a lot of other towns, they'll tell you, if it's not failing, don't change it, because it's actually one of the better types of systems.
Oh, so it is... It's not just the drywall. It's a septic...
Yeah.
Right.
Tank plus feeds to a drywall.
Plus a drywall.
Okay. That's... I was hearing that maybe this was just a drywall. It sounded, uh... Because those...
It's hard to kill them.
Have shown up in the past also.
That may have very well been what the repair was, was that they put the tank in. It was probably a drywall to begin with, and then they added a holding tank before it goes out.
Yeah. Okay. So, all right. I wanted a little clarification. And so the test that was done most recently, the... I don't know if it was these folks or somebody else that determined that it was functioning fine and that it showed no signs of being overloaded.
Correct. Yeah, Kent's...
Current configuration.
Do we have that, or...
No.
We don't actually have that inspection report, do we? No.
All right. Well, I'm just going to what she was telling us, that's all I'm going to say. So, all right. And the only thing... Or not the only thing, but the thing I see out of this, this letter that comes from the, you know, surveyor, septic designer, Geometris, Geometris, is that with the current proposal, that you... The configuration you have of residents, barbershop, and what, there's something else to...
The office space or...
Office space. Yet it... In his estimation, it is not likely to put any other... Any more load on it than it's ever had, so in his opinion, it seems to be functional as it is. Now, if it were... That also suggested to me that if it were increased, if there was some reason to, you know... If things were doubled, let's just say, you know, the barbershop was twice as big, the residence was twice as big, or something. The septic system is not saying one way or the other, but it's saying that maybe it wouldn't work then, but it would work under current conditions.
Correct.
That's what I'm getting from that. He just... But he is suggesting that it shouldn't be increased in some... Not tiny bit, but the... Because he... He just phrases it that...
Oh.
As it's currently operating.
Well, specifically, he says that, you know, the apartment must remain vacant to guarantee that they'll increase, or the daily load on the septic won't increase above the design level. It's on the backside.
So it's based on what the last usage of a property that we knew it was, and that doesn't include the fact that there were two illegal two-bedroom apartments in there, plus two storefronts, and then the garage being used?
Right.
Because we can't use that because it was illegal, despite the fact it was being used like that for multiple years?
Right.
And it also doesn't take into consideration the drywall.
James?
Oh, sorry. There was me playing with my pen.
Okay. Sorry. We're waving.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add a comment?
Sure.
Currently, the one-bedroom apartment does not have a CO.
Okay.
Certificate of occupancy.
And I just want to go on the record to state that the Town of Northwood had a long history of trying to enforce the removal of the illegal apartment. It was done several times, put back in, we went to court, and it was finally taken out. The court approved it.
That's the basement apartment.
That's the basement apartment. The one-bedroom apartment in the upstairs of the building was a part of the original sub... Site plan approval.
So what...
So technically...
Geometris...
Technically, it's a one-bedroom, but because of the way that it's been recorded through the assessor's office, because of the illegal use...
That doesn't mean anything.
Right, but they had to take the tax card when they did it, so they count it as a two-bedroom.
Okay.
So even though it's a one... It should really only be a one-bedroom, because the second bedroom, you have to go through one bedroom to the other. Geometrics had to put it in as a two-bedroom. So that changes the load on it as well.
Well, can I ask them...
Well, maybe we could... James and I could throw out some options. One thing that...
So I think there are multiple ways that we could resolve this.
Okay.
The board could decide that the information that we have isn't what we were looking for and therefore doesn't meet the conditions.
Okay.
The board could decide that the information that we have gotten is as good as what we were looking for and therefore does meet the conditions. Or, my understanding is the applicant is willing to file some sort of state-approved septic design to get something on record. So if the board would be amenable to going that route, my suggestion would be that we put a timeline on that and that we make that a condition subsequent, prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the residents.
And let me clarify, the CO that you just stated is for the residents as a whole, as the apartment, the single-bedroom apartment?
For the apartment.
Okay.
My understanding is that the certificate of occupancy for the barbershop has actually already been issued in error, which is part of why we are trying to clear things up as quickly as possible. So we would tie it to occupancy for the apartment, going off of the letter we received from the septic designer saying, "We would recommend that this stay vacant in order to guarantee that there isn't an increase over the prior approved load," and I know there's difficulties with the illegal uses. So I would say the board could put a timeline on when that septic plan would be filed. I think in that case, it seems reasonable to find a timeframe that works for both the applicant and the board.
Sure.
And that essentially, the apartment could not be used until that is done. But that by moving that to a condition subsequent, we can sign off on the plans, so their site plan will be compliant, and then we'll be able to take advantage of the occupancy permit for the barbershop.
Right. Me personally, as one individual member of the board, is leaning toward that as the most favorable. The question I have, and it might not be even... Might be a moot point, is that if the septic design, from the May 9th letter, for the one-bedroom with walk-through, can I describe it that way? Is a two-bedroom in the septic design. The low... Septic load for a true one-bedroom is probably less than a two-bedroom. Yeah. I'm wondering if that brings you closer to...
Sitting in the middle of this...
No, no, I'm going the... Actually, I'm going the opposite way, because that still would negate the... The bedroom in the basement. You would be having one legal one-bedroom apartment for the septic design. You still would not be able to use the basement apartment.
There is a basement apartment.
Or...
That's gone, as far as I know.
It's gone. Okay. That's gone.
Now, just to clarify a little further, partly with that in mind, but so you mentioned the basement apartment that was there improperly previously. Did this septic design individual, or do they take that into account at all?
So...
And I'm saying that because he refers to the historical...
No, they did not.
No.
Okay. As far as it not being legal, or legal, I'm not referring to, but legal or not.
No, they didn't consider it as far as the gallons...
Right.
Per day.
It's not included in the design.
Because it can only be included...
Well, he refers to the historic use, so I'm wondering, was he aware of that or not? Because that's the issue.
It's legal historic use. Legal historic use.
The legal, the design legal.
So they're referring to the...
Okay, but that's not what he's saying. He's just saying the historic use.
Well, that's what he's saying.
But that's what he had to...
Historic... We're talking to a septic designer, and the septic designer doesn't...
Well, it could go either way. He either took it into account or he didn't, but I understand...
He didn't take it into account.
He laid out, and then he... And then, to your point, he laid out, I mean, there's three spaces there. There's a barbershop, the... What he's calling a two-bedroom apartment.
No, it doesn't.
And a retail space.
Right.
So Bob's saying that if that was a one-bedroom apartment, would it... And he's estimating 300 gallons a day is the requirement, but... And a one-bedroom theoretically would be a smaller number. I don't know what it is or what it is.
But, yeah, well...
And so that total, though, okay, but that doesn't change the overall suggestion of James, but I'm... Has one suggestion that to get this finally on file with the state, you could have it, the whole thing... You could submit a... I guess it would be an application at that point for your... you, you could submit a, I guess it would be an application at that point for your current design, and see if it flies.
But, I realize my error in that, if we reduce the historic use, design use, closer to the proposed use, that doesn't solve the problem. The problem is that, from what I understand, is that the apartment must remain vacant for them not to exceed the septic design, and that's not the entire intended result. You want to rent the apartment, correct?
But he says this, this apartment, so, I mean, if you, if you take into what-
Joe, what we need to do to bring the applicant into compliance with the code is to increase the available load or the design load on the septic.
But he says it was, okay, here's, he says historically it was able to handle what he's got here.
Right, but he does have the apartment.
And what we know is it's very possible it was handling also another apartment, but set that one entirely aside. What he's, what he's looking at is an apartment, a retail space, and a, not a barber shop previously, but-
Correct. At 350 gallons per day, or 410 gallons per day, the ex, the ex-proposed use is 350 gallons per day, excluding the apartment for the proposed use. So there's no apartment in the proposed use, and she wants the apartment included in the use, so we need to increase the design load.
Yeah. I guess I'm, I'm observing the fine point here that, that, you know, and I don't know if both those apartments were occupied simultaneously in that factory, and for any length of time, because that, that would mean that that septic system was handling both of those, apparently without any malfunction. So, it, it seems to have a capacity that's probably okay for what you're proposing. It's as though the barber shop is another apartment.
No.
Mr. Chairman?
In terms of loading, it's about the same.
No.
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 300, 350.
Go ahead, Linda.
In the interest of time.
Yes.
I think that there's a lot of things that can be debated, but most of us don't have that designation after our name, and it could be that, there could be 10 apartments in there, it might not fail, but we don't know that. But I think, and I don't want to speak for the applicant, but I think the interest tonight is to come to a solution so that they can move forward with the, with the barber shop use, at least as quickly as possible, to expedite that, and however that, the board wants to achieve that.
Yeah. What I'm thinking, and this is just a draft for discussion, is that we have a condition, multiple conditions, one of which is that the apartment remains vacant until that we, the town receives a state-approved septic for future, whatever, that includes everything you need, or everything you want. That it be received in some timeframe to be negotiated, but that as long as, and this is where I would need extra recommendations on this, would be that as long as the apartment, that condition is met, the apartment remains vacant, that we get the state-approved septic on there, the use of the barber shop conditions are met with those.
I think the way I would suggest phrasing that would be that we issue another notice of decision from the board indicating that for the purpose of the signing of plans, the board has found that all conditions have been met. That we have post-added an additional condition to be met prior to issuing a certi- certificate of occupancy for the apartment, and that would be sort of a condition 3A. The applicant will file an approved septic plan with the state within throwing out a number of six months of this decision.
What would-
Mr. Chairman, before we get into the motion, we do need to open it up to the public for any input.
That's right.
Thank you. Okay. I was trying to do initially. Okay, why don't we let the board cogitate on that? I want you to think of a timeframe for, because I'm, I'm thinking of one, but I tend to put one on the long end. I, and the burden would be on you to file with the state, chase them to get it back, all that other, et cetera, et cetera. And the board can think about making sure that does that, checking their list of the process. If we grant the condition of filing a state-approved septic, does that meet the criteria for the, the rest of the application? To, for the, for the barber shop to proceed to open with a CO, or as James, however James stated it, I think that's summarizing it. At this point in time, for case 1712, I'll open the public hearing. If there's anyone who would like to speak on this application, please do so at this time. Don't all speak at once. At this time, I will close the public hearing on case 17-12. Subject to reopening at the board's pleasure. Okay, chance to cogitate? Do we need to restate anything? Is it fairly clear? Okay. You want to draft language? Do we need language?
You want me to read it again?
Sure.
So, the board's decision, if you're moving forward in this route, would be a finding that all conditions for the purpose of the signing of plans have been met, subject to a further condition, which shall be completed prior to certificate of occupancy for the apartment, that the applicant will file an approved septic plan with the state within
Six months.
Six months, is that fine?
Yeah, six CDs after the plan is drawn, so.
Just for reference, because this is a sweep, in that you are, you have the obvious need to get it done sooner, why don't we say a year? You can certainly file it sooner than that.
Okay.
That way, if things, if you run into a snag, you're not, have to come back before this.
So, the condition will read, the applicant, prior to the issuing a certificate of occupancy for the apartment unit, the applicant will file an approved septic plan with the state within one year of this decision.
I didn't hear anything from the board, so I assume that the timeframe change is okay, but-
That seems fine.
I expect you to speak up. Okay.
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Motion by Ms. B. Smith, second by Ms. Baldwin. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Those abstaining?
I have a copy of the-
Okay, good. Thank you for your work.
If we get you a copy of that plan tonight, will you sign it?
Certainly.
So that those will be all set.
I can do that?
Whenever his signature goes on it.
Would I tomorrow?
Yes.
Most likely. I will be here tomorrow.
Yep.
We're gonna hold it, hold you to that, Bob.
That's fine. That's fine.
Thank you very much.
If you can dig it up tonight, I will sign it tonight. No problems at all.
All right, I will definitely do that. I will-
When I've gone past, I've been wondering why-
Take a recess and go do it.
Do we need to? Let's get through 18-3. Well, we can take a recess.
Carry on.
Yeah, we can carry, let's carry on. Okay, Linda's doing that. Okay. So I'll call case 18-3, The Big Top LLC. 166 North New Hampshire Turnpike. Okay, from the board's perspective, we had a chance to discuss this two weeks ago.
This one, yes.
Yes, thank you. Sorry about that. And, I don't think we found anything outstanding that we wanted, or at least didn't have any questions that prevented us from proceeding. So I would entertain a motion for completeness.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay. A motion by Ms. Smith, and second by one of the two men at the end, Joe. I gotta pull my paperwork out. Any discussion on completeness? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those abstaining? Okay. So we're on the clock. You have 65, we, the board has 65 days to make a decision at most. One or two things happens if the clock runs out. Either we make a decision based on the information we're given, or you can request an extension. My suspicion is that we won't run the clock out. But, that remains to be seen. Why don't you introduce yourself and tell us what you want about your application?
Sure. My name is Cleaver Rides. I am the trustee for the Irrevocable Trust for the benefit of Katerina Xanthopoulos. It'll be a spelling test later.
Thank you. That's why it's written out.
We purchased the Baptist church next to Hannaford's, and we would like to convert it from church to antique store.
Okay. What I'll do, should have done it first, but I didn't, at this point, is read the Butters list. If you are in a butter in the audience, please both raise your hand and say something, so that I know you're here when I read your name. Hannaford Brothers. Aaron Snow. Thank you. John Jewett of New, New, Northwood. Mark Farrell of Northwood. Joseph Harding of Northwood. State of New Hampshire. I think we can take care of, assume they aren't here tonight. Okay.
They don't come very often.
Thank you. What we'll do, at a later point in time, after a little discussion, is give a Butters a chance to speak if they would like. Same method as before, I'll call for a public hearing. Butters will be given a chance to speak first, and then any member of the public can comment. Okay. So you want to put it in retail, I think, and the site is up on the, yes, no? Yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
That's it. And I'm gonna get my notes out. Forgive me.
Mr. Chair, I did want to address one item that we discussed at the workshop. That being the fact that the outline of the parcel on the site plan looks slightly different from the outline of the parcel on the GIF. We have been able to locate deed information showing that parcel 234-81, which is the Department of Transportation parcel, was divided between the abutting property owners when that state route was vacated.
Okay.
So, it's the town's GIS that is failing to show that.
Okay.
So the shape is considerably more correct than we thought.
Essentially, what, a line dividing-
I, I think it's dividing the property roughly in half.
Okay.
And giving it to each.
Between a Butters on either side of what is Church Street.
The Jewets have half the street, and we have the other half.
Okay, okay. Okay. So then, how we determined how that makes parking work?
I-
That was the big question.
I think we can still discuss what spaces should be shown. I believe, on the, did you all receive the revised plan?
Oh, that's what you asked me to pass around. That's okay. I always, I always saw the top one, which had the stamp. I thought that went with the file. My apologies. Okay, that's coming around.
When I ran the calculations based on what they were showing previously, we determined that they did not need to have as much parking as they were showing.
Okay.
So by eliminating a row and avoiding some of those questions, you know, we feel that they would still have sufficient parking on site for the use that they are proposing.
Okay.
For that square footage of, of retail use.
Okay. Do we hear anything about the septic?
You do have that letter.
You have that? Okay, thank you.
Yes, we've received a septic letter.
Okay. Hopefully stating that it's adequate.
More than adequate.
Okay. I figured if you're going from a church where there's, I haven't been, have I been inside? I can't remember.
I think the septic was initially made for 187-person load.
Okay.
So it's substantially larger than we need.
The letter states-
You don't think you're gonna have that many customers at once, huh?
Well, we can only hope.
The letters, the letter states, for the record, the original design was approved for 561 gallons per day. With an estimated two employees and 50 customers per day, the sewage load would be approximately 280 gallons per day. So roughly half
Right.
what the system was designed to accommodate.
Yep.
So, in that case, on my prior staff report, I had three conditions. The update to the plan to add the names, addresses, and tax map numbers of abutting property owners has been completed. We have now received a letter from a licensed septic designer, so the only remaining condition that staff would be recommending would be either written confirmation that the existing driveway can accommodate expected traffic or a driveway permit.
Okay, and I want-
Can I just address that?
Sure.
I did come in and speak to Linda about that, and when we went over the deed that gave us back the, the half the street, it was, and you'll have to wait, I guess, till she comes back, it was her understanding that, at that time, a driveway permit would have been issued, because otherwise we would have been landlocked.
Right.
And that she was gonna check with Charlie Pease to make sure that there was a driveway permit in effect, and if not, he would issue me anyone. Because you can't, I mean, you can't legally, you can't landlock a property, as you know.
Right. And I was thinking about that as well, is if Church Street is now split with a dividing line.
My understanding is that the DOT parcel has been split by the dividing line, but that that little bit of Church Street that comes down is still a town road.
Yes. Okay, so where was the driveway, then? The exit.
It would be right where the pole is, I-
Miss ask this part?
Right in that area. Yeah.
So, and I think this is a case of, like, Joe and Mr. Wolf would certainly appreciate, there is the, what we can design or approve, and what is actually used, and how it's actually used. What I would like the plan to include is the location of the driveway.
It, it does.
On there. That's the entry and exit.
Yeah. And when we remove these spaces, which were on the prior approved site plan for the church, we don't need these spaces, and it actually makes-
You're talking the 72, the ones-
The ones that are-
Just below existing structure?
The initial plan, it had them here.
Oh, yes, okay, now I see.
We removed them.
Okay.
So that opened up a, a really-
Then they can use this whole section.
A really wide area for-
You're referring to removing this group over here?
Right, right.
Yes, the eighty-one foot.
That's why it's blank.
Right, correct.
And do we determine-
Is there a curb along that?
No, not at all. No, no curb at all.
Do we determine that the parking lot is adequate to fit those numbers based on scale?
I didn't go out there with a measuring tape, that's what you're asking.
Between the septic. And now that was just from the edge of the building to the edge of the lawn, so that's not unreasonable.
Yeah, and I mean, just for the record, I copied the site plan made by a professional.
Sure.
I didn't make the, I didn't make up the numbers.
I'm not claiming that you did. Don't think that. It's more that in hand drawn plans, sometimes numbers are, are made to fit. Can I put it that way?
Yeah, no, I, I used the numbers that were on a, on a real plan.
And the, and the reason for needing the accuracy is that this is what you will be held to. And if your drawings are inaccurate and impossible to meet and they're, when we approve them, first of all, shame on us, but also, secondly, you're gonna have a tough job arguing that, yes, I am meeting them. So that's why we like to make sure they're accurate on both sides.
Because I wasn't here in the previous discussion just to ask a couple of little questions. But what is the retail? I understand you're proposing a weekend internet auction at the site.
Well, not, not really a weekend, just occasionally we sell stuff online through, through internet auctions.
Well, it says days and hours operation, that's why I said weekend, Sunday, Saturday.
Yeah, that's the retail, the retail portion of it.
Sunday through Saturday. Maybe that's what that means.
Like retail, retail.
Okay, so the, the internet sales, so that would occur-
Randomly.
Uh, sporadically. The, the internet auctions are only done maybe two or three times a year. They're not, they're just specialty sales, so they don't happen frequently. Only when you have, say, a collection of a certain type that, that needs to go all over the world versus-
A wider audience.
Be bigger than Earth would.
So otherwise it would be just some people coming in and walk in retail.
Right, the rest of the time, we're just a regular antique store like everybody else.
I see.
You have a couple more or also?
No, there was a couple of things that had actually been clarified. Maybe I'll mention, but I think I now maybe know what it is. But on the plan, both plans, the updated one and the previous, there's a-
Actually, the May twenty-first one. The one without the parking spaces, the eighty-one foot parking spaces is the one that would go on file.
They both have this characteristic, so that's why I was saying that. But the, in the title block, there's a there's a, a drawing of delineations and then ten foot, ten foot, ten foot, ten foot. Is, is that meant, is that a scale representation or?
Because then it's, it goes back over to here, see how it's ten foot, ten foot, so it's showing.
Yeah.
It's just a scale.
But that's what, alright, that's what that is, so you're, you're representing. Yeah. Ten, so that would apply to, for instance, parking spaces, let's say. I mean, you've drawn them a little roughly, but you're, some of them look like they're ten feet wide and others not, but I mean, is ten foot a reference for that or just a general scale? I guess that's what I was wondering, whether it had some-
The parking spaces are labeled as nine feet by eighteen feet each.
Correct. Which is code.
Okay, so they're, alright. They're not drawn to that scale, so alright.
Right, it's not a, it's not a professional scale. It's a, it's a rough scale.
Nine by eighteen, yeah.
But based on?
Was that the existing spaces over there? Because there were-
I believe so.
This is, these are, this is the existing spaces.
Yeah.
So this, when you look at the site plan that was done by a surveyor for the church, this is what they had for spaces.
Yeah, and they were nine by eighteen or you-
I could, I looked, but I couldn't find.
There's no markings left though.
No markings left.
Right, there, there is-
It's rather worn out.
Okay.
So at this point, I'll open the public hearing portion of this application. If you're in a butter and would like to speak, please do so, just state your name. And you do need to use the microphone, supersede Gary. You can come to the table if you'd like, makes no difference.
My name is Aaron Snow. My property abuts yours. It's come to my understanding that the graveyard that abuts my property is part of that property.
When you say you're a neighbor, you're on which side?
So I'm on the other side of the entrance to Hannaford.
Okay, thank you, just wanted to double check.
Yep. My largest concern is for a number of years, there is a large portion of trees that align that stone wall that are leaning directly over my home. And I have a lot of concern about that. I'd really like to see that taken care of.
I, I did ask, I'm not sure who owns that and-
I did talk to-
You did, okay.
I talked to Steve Bailey about that, yeah.
Because I spoke with-
He told me there's somebody who actually has been taking care of that. A caretaker for however many years and plans on continuing taking care of it.
Really? Because it's not taken care of.
But he's also, that's what he's-
I've been kinda getting the runaround a little bit, so.
I asked him, is that ours? Because if it's ours, I wanna clean it up because it looks terrible. And we weren't sure if it belongs to us or it doesn't.
Yeah.
It does.
The cemetery. No, it's a town, it's a town main, but there was a, there's a caretaker and, but he's in his seventies and so he doesn't know how much longer he's gonna be doing it. It's basically why he told me.
Is he pre, the caretaker, was he associated with the church organization?
No, it's a town.
The name, I know who it is. Alright, he told me who it was, just somebody-
Suggestion is to pull up that lot since we have G I S up running.
Well, cemeteries do not, are not under ownership per se. I mean, they may, they may be described in a, in a label.
They are, yeah, they are.
You can't do something to that cemetery though because you technically own it. You can't.
No.
Correct, I mean, you can't, yeah, you can't change the use, you can't change the use of it.
You can't interfere with it.
I think the, I think the question from the butter is that who owns it and as a result, who is responsible for the maintenance of it.
And are trees surrounding the cemetery or some one side anywhere?
It's very overgrown, the whole thing is overgrown.
I mean, what's an upkeep issue?
This is the cemetery or?
No, back there. That's it, that's it, yeah, that's the cemetery.
Where is the entrance to Hannaford?
Right there.
Oh, no, no. It's on the other side of the square. When I click on that.
Is your property, excuse me, is it just a little further north or?
Okay, when you click on it, what happens?
Bob was just pointing.
Correct.
It's the corner, the blue thing.
Just the other side, yeah.
This is your property? I think, so just zoom in a little bit, it's probably the resolution is-
It is, it's just to the side of the cemetery.
It's this.
Under the driveway.
Yeah.
Because when Hannaford came in, they had to get, there was some statute relative to the distance that driveway had to be from that cemetery. Because it's closer than what the state law allowed.
Can you click on that and pull it up?
It doesn't have a personal I D on it.
Was this the?
It's ident, it's identified as the Baptist Church Cemetery, so we didn't know. It's not in our deed though, but we weren't sure.
That was, that was the most amount of information we were able to get is that the church owned it. And when we received the notice from Wolf's plan, I said, boy, I'd love to see it get cleaned up when my house gets crushed.
It does need cleaning up, it's a mess.
It is.
I'm just, if it's not in the, correct me if I'm wrong, but if it's, and I'm-
I'm thinking of it, I'm at the wrong meeting.
Pardon me?
I said, I'm thinking of it, I'm at the wrong meeting.
No, I don't think it's at the wrong meeting. I think it's, it's not pertinent to the, this, this case.
This is an, this is an issue worth clearing up, but this is not something that I would consider relevant to consideration of this application.
Right.
This is more of a civil matter than a civic matter.
Yes.
We would still want to do our best to make sure that we figure out who owns that and try and pass that along to get it cleaned up. We're not trying to brush it off. But that's not something that the board should be trying to resolve with this application.
Correct. So, you're doing fine and we're not telling you to go away.
I'm just wondering, what does that leave me?
Let's say this is, meeting is being recorded, so you're in, in the minutes. You're on the public record. You've notified the town that you want it taken care of. And I think the land use staff will make sure that it gets to the proper people or clarify it, so, but, thank you.
Other than that, everything else, you guys answered questions. I was concerned, parking was a, was a concern of mine. Traffic was also another one. I mean, we do get a lot of heavy traffic just for Hannaford lawn. Kids live on the street, just wanna make sure it stays aware.
Well, how could you be getting that much traffic? It's not supposed to be through traffic then.
Well, let's say- Do you remember what I just spoke?
I've seen it go fifty miles an hour down that space to beat the lights.
Since there was nobody on the board, when this board, who was on the board at that point in time, I spoke earlier about what we designed versus what, how it gets used. So, but, so be it. Okay.
Appreciate your time, guys, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And good luck.
Anyone else who would like to speak on this case? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing portion of case eighteen dash oh three. Okay. Questions from the board, items of discussion? So we got the plan changes in, is that correct? Yep. Septic, we have a letter saying it's-
We have a letter.
We have a letter saying it's, the design is adequate.
When Linda was just back in here for a few minutes, she said she hasn't been able to find a driveway permit yet. So it suggests that we leave that as a condition. And as soon as she's either able to locate that or she can work with Dale and the road agent to make sure that one gets issued, then we'll be ready for signing plans.
Okay. And?
But the driveway permit would be on a private street now, right?
No.
No.
My understanding is Church Street is a public road, a townhouse.
It comes in there, but isn't it, what we're just talking about that, then it transfers, it's been given up?
How far do they plow?
That's, yes.
I think that's something that we've been asking about. I think the town actually is currently plowing private property sometimes.
Yellow line that goes across the road, isn't that where the public road ends?
Well, that's what I, exactly what I was wondering. It looks a lot because here, this is the D O P parcel, this was the boundary line. So my understanding is this parcel is what was divided. This is still down the right of way.
The town, the town's season is a right of way, it's not, it's not the town's anymore, is it?
Yes, that's the right of way of Church Street. Which is town property.
So their driveway would be here.
Well, right of way doesn't make a property, I'd say.
When we talk about streets, we don't talk about parcels, we talk about what's in the right of way. That's town property.
My understanding in looking at it and knowing that, when that was given to the two abutters, I originally thought when I was talking with Cleo that, that it went up to the edge of that property. But then I was looking at it further back. So essentially, the road is changed from state to town. But their driveway entrance, there was always a driveway entrance there.
Correct.
Yes.
So it-
I'm, I'm-
For the church.
Going by what's on the tax map, which if that parcel is split-
Change of use, but I, I think there's-
It's still sort of an L in that parcel.
Are there, there are access to one or more residences on the, what would be the east, southeast there?
There's a business, where a former business has-
Is it still called Church Street? There, are the resident, there, there is a residence there, but is that, is that where they gain access?
Yeah, the, the entrance is right opposite about where that yellow line is. They park their cars right there.
That's the ex-town property, right?
Well, I'm talking about the, the line that goes, that goes east-west.
Right there.
That one.
Okay, but there's a residence within that area and isn't there one further north? Not the two places there, am I just missing?
There's only one directly across the street from us. It's, it's big, but it's, it's a house and a store.
And just that, that?
Just one, the Jewets.
The shop there.
And they, they enter and exit the same.
They use the same, they use the same driveway?
Yeah, yes.
Know that or not?
I don't, I don't think so. I would have to redraw it. So pardon the crooked line here because I'm doing this on a laptop and accidentally clicked where I shouldn't. So pretend that's a straight line, but this is my understanding of approximately what the parcel looks like right now.
Okay.
And part of that includes what was given up-
Correct.
On the previous street, the half street that they-
From the blue to the red.
When it was part of the state road, it was split between this property and this property. But my understanding is Church Street and the town road comes to about here.
Does the town, the town is still recognizing that too where the street, well, I mean, where the, the town, the previous, I'm sorry, the previous state owned property was?
Anytime I've seen it plowed, it's been plowed to about that way.
People's houses, yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of things get plowed over there that don't belong to me. Okay.
I think the issue with the, about the plowing is that they don't have any place to put the snow.
Correct.
So I, I think at that time when they did that, they asked the church and the Jewets if they could put the snow at the end of the street and they said yes. So that, I think that's the reason why they go all the way to the end even though it's not a town road.
Well, I think that's going to be addressed or looked at.
I mean, that's fine with me.
In speaking to the town administrator, just to make sure that, I, I think the, what needs to happen, if it hasn't happened, is just that both you and the Jewets would have to sign off holding the town harmless for going on your property and plowing on it. Either that or we'd have to stay off, one or the other.
Yeah. Now, as far as the issuance of the driveway permit goes, the burden is-
It would be the town.
It would be the town who, obviously the town issues it.
And there may be one, you're saying, and there may be one?
We have not found one.
Yes, we haven't found one.
But if, if there is one, we'll follow up and we'll find it. If there's not one, we'll follow up and have one issued.
Okay, so the applicant doesn't need to have a, apply for a permit?
Well, yes, because even if there was one, which I'm certain there probably wasn't because it probably goes back to whenever the church started in the eighteen hundreds. But we still require people for a change of use to, to show that, so.
That's what I was wondering.
Right, but I, I don't think it's gonna be an issue, it'd just be a matter of the- Right. But I, I don't think it's going to be an issue. It'd just be a matter of the, the town road agent issuing her a
I mainly want the applicant to know what she needs to do.
Wait, Linda had said she would talk to whoever it was, and then he would let me know if you had one on file.
There's none on file. I couldn't find a thing. I looked through and I looked through the, uh, for the, there was an approval for an event. There was a daycare approval, and then there was an approval for an, an event. It was like a couple of days out of the year. There was nothing. I couldn't find anything.
How did the daycare get approval without a driveway permit? I'm just curious.
Because it's a one-time?
No, the daycare, that was an ongoing business.
Because it was, there was, I don't know, without looking back and seeing.
The daycare was?
It may have been a requirement. The, I don't, the daycare never opened. I don't think they ever had an occupancy permit.
They did, they did.
Did they?
Yeah.
The daycare was part of the, uh, the original church ownership. I mean, it was, it was an extension. It was coming through that when we looked at it.
That's true.
So it was the church already using the property as a law.
The daycare.
Uh, whether, you know, whether they had a driveway permit at that point. This church dates back to, though that, this physical building doesn't, but the church is, and I, I just wanted to mention something about that in regard to, you're looking into the future about this. In seventeen seventy-nine, it's the oldest church. Founded, not that building, but founded in town. It's the oldest, uh, church community that no longer exists because everybody that belonged to it had gone now. And, and the Baptist church that owned it has obviously sold it, so. But, uh, just keeping that in mind for whatever physical changes, you know, obviously it's your property. Literally be demolished, I suppose, but it is the, uh, the oldest, uh, church in.
Well, she's doing an antique store.
We're antique dealers.
Antique sounds like a feature.
Choir here, right?
Yeah, I mean, they, they had already taken the pews out, but the bell is there and the clock is there.
Well, there's been some unfortunate, uh, yeah.
Stuff.
Yeah.
Stuff taken, but, but it's been altered, uh, unfortunately, yeah.
Okay.
Those, are the pews still there?
No, they, they took those out before they put it.
Those dated from, because I looked this up actually, just, but they dated to a hundred years after it was founded, eighteen seventy-eight, when they put those in.
I want to go to the antique store.
Somebody took them, I guess.
Okay. So, I think the only thing outstanding then for a condition is the driveway permit. And that is, the town is aware that you will be requesting a driveway permit.
Yeah.
So I think that's okay, but just make sure that if there are.
Yeah, I don't, there's no question, they have, just from a legal standpoint, it has to be issued because they can't, you know, block us from entering and exiting the property. So I think it's just a formality at this point.
It is the formality, but it's more a matter of, of, it sounds like you need to actually request the day of that to make sure that we can't just issue it without the request.
Yeah.
Fill out whatever they have to fill out.
Very easy situation. It's been used a lot in the past.
Any other questions?
Do we need a motion to approve with condition?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and the only condition is that the town receive a driveway permit application? No, driveway permit.
Driveway permit.
Driveway permit be issued. Okay. Uh, nothing else? No other conditions? Okay. Does that go along with the motion?
Yep.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I can, I can do it.
Okay. So motion by Ms. B. Smith, second by Ms. Baldwin. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of approving case eighteen dash three with the single condition of receiving the driveway permit? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining. Okay. Good to go?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, one thing that we, that the building inspector has asked us to start telling applicants is that they will receive a notice of decision, um, within a week of the decision. Normally for planning board, we get them out the Tuesday or Wednesday following. In this case, since there's only the one item, we know it's going to move quickly. Um, but the building inspector occasionally has people knocking on his door the next day, asking for their building permits.
Don't worry.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we need a break?
Do you do?
Do we need a break?
Let's go ahead and get.
I don't let me even think about a nap.
Yeah, Joe wants to get done, so we can go home and crash.
Okay, that's fine. Um, I'll call the next case, eighteen dash oh four.
You're doing so well, Joe.
Uh, Boy Scouts of America Spirit Adventure Council. Is the old one?
That group case has had a rough life.
Yes. Yes, I, yeah. It's actually the scouts if it's. Yeah, I think it's just the scouts. They just changed it. Okay. We have a minor site plan that we talked about two weeks ago. And, let me dig out my case notes. And given the information that's in the application and, um, second couple waivers that are requested, I entertain a motion on completeness.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. B. Smith, second by Mr. McCaffrey. Discussion on completeness. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, those abstaining. Okay. So we're on the clock for sixty-five days, if need be, just so you're aware of that. I know you are. And I'll open, actually, the clock will start now. With that, I'll open case eighteen dash oh four. And as soon as I find it, I'll get the Butters list.
Susan, can we see the file first?
Okay.
The binder for this case.
Can I read the Butters list first? That's okay. I'll give it to you in a second.
I just wondered, do you have a signature on yours? I don't have a signature on that. On the application.
You can read the Butters list and I can add a condition for approval.
Okay. Um, I'll read the Butters list. Since there are no members of the public here, I think, uh, I won't bother the formalities of raising your hands. You're also a representative.
You can only be one thing at once.
Yeah, one thing at a time.
You gotta, you gotta go between the two chairs.
Yeah. That'll be, that'll be an interesting, uh, way to do that. Okay. Uh, Douglas Welcome, Daniel Fletcher, Stephen Anthony, Yankee Clipper Council, which I assume this is a representative, Glenn A. Brackett, Douglas Babcock, Meadow Lane Northwood, Open Space, Angela Adcock, Dave DeSignant, who is representing the applicant, Avril Family Trust, Eileen McGrannigan, Dennis Savoy, Raymond Pellerin, Robert Vincent, Lawrence Ritchie Jr., Bailey &amp; Co., and Town of Northwood, represented by Ms.
We do have one letter from a Butter.
Yes, I saw it at the front. Yep.
No?
Yes. From, oh, Meadow Lane. That's a, uh.
Just a, maybe likes a scout.
They're not listed as in a Butter, but it's Meadow Lane.
Did you say Meadow, the Open Space Meadow?
Yes, Open Space Development.
So is that all the houses that are connected to that?
Ooh.
Because I'm, technically it would be in a Butter.
Let's pull up the, the thing on here so we can see.
You might be in a Butter to in a Butter.
Yeah, but that's, that's in the matter.
We got to settle this first before you get.
How do you set the open Meadow line?
Well, it's the one below. It's off like so. Well, it's actually a middle road that runs back there. You wouldn't be in a Butter. Because you, you're not contiguous there anyway.
It's the long line. Click and drag to move it down.
Yeah, I'm right there, right there.
That long line from the north end.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, round one.
Here's where you are.
Yeah.
Yep. Did you find yourself?
Yeah, I'm in one of those grids.
From the north end.
Connecting to Harmony.
Yeah?
That is not me.
That's Meadow.
You're in the wrong area.
Okay.
That's not?
No. No, I'm right, right, bottom right.
No.
Bottom right. Bottom right of the screen. Go over.
You, you got to come down a little more. He's.
Drag it right. Yeah. There you go. Those grids, see all those like?
Right there.
On the other side of the road?
On the other side.
Yeah, yeah, I'm in there. Sorry. So I, when you said the open Meadow, I thought we were talking about that area. So I just wanted to make sure.
We do need to go up to Meadow Lane.
Yeah, you had it before.
Yeah, the, the Butters list does include.
Notified.
Yeah.
That's on there.
I thought somebody just said somebody wasn't in a Butter.
There.
Mister Johnson is on Meadow Lane, but he is not on the Butters list.
Okay, shall we go up to Meadow Lane?
Board has the discretion to hear from whoever you want.
Yes, they do. But I think that, I believe.
My suspicion. At the rotary, he's the lot to the left. Yes, yes. My suspicion.
Well, no, I think it's not what she said.
Well, she's got her hand, it's Mister Johnson's lot. Yes, yes. So my suspicion is that this is the Open Space lot, that I'd be applying to the parcel.
And those folks were not, was the association notified?
I don't think you, I don't.
Somebody had been notified.
When you did this Butter list, because I did a, I did a, you know what, I did an even bigger slot when I did the Butters. I need to look at my list. I can't.
It's in here. No?
No, it's, it's on.
We, we need to check because the Butter hasn't been notified.
There is a.
I notified more people than, that were.
I think.
I used this program right here and did a, I did a wide slot.
Can you just verify that? That would be helpful.
So Tom may have gotten one.
You've got an area, a contiguous area.
I'm guessing he probably did. That's why he replied.
That, that is being called.
I'm actually doing work for him and I let him know that we've got that card.
Okay.
And that's why you've got the, and he also, but he also got a recertified letter.
Okay, well, then that's what we're looking for.
Yeah. Well, we just, because if we, town gets into a lot of legal issues if we don't notify and have a hearing correctly. So let's, okay. I want to find out the rest of Meadow Lane first, so let's take a couple of minutes.
The he that you're referring to, I don't know, because you have a designated space here that's called Open Space Meadow Lane. And it has no official.
Address.
Ownership.
Correct.
Or whatever.
It is owned by the.
There's one on, there's one on one.
Association.
There's a Babcock and then there's a Brackett at the other end. Those are designated, those have been notified. They're on the Butters list. But this open space probably doesn't have a notification procedure, I don't.
Right.
Because of the way it's.
Right. Well, and it's.
But yet it probably is owned by, that in common by the people that live all along there.
My, my recollection and supposition is that this, all these houses are Meadow Lane Association. This is the open space.
So they own the common.
They own the common, but because this lot applies, the applicant's lot, that's what came up on the, on the Butters list using this protocol.
Yeah.
This does not apply.
No.
So, but they are a membership in the association, making that assumption. So that's what Susan is checking now, to make sure that the actual address, deliverable addresses have been notified.
Technically, should we have?
So we're, we have an open.
Association know?
That's what Linda's checking now.
Is it common then because of like the minimum acres required for a property?
When it was subdivided, the open space subdivision regulation was in place. I'm assuming that because it was before my time.
Yeah.
That was twenty years.
So, whatever the percentage is, needs to go into open space in common and each owns a parcel to it. But then from the town's tax perspective, that parcel is separately noticed as open space. And it takes a human to know that, oh, it comes up on as open space. We need to notify all the members who own it in common.
Gotcha.
Those are some pretty horrible lot lines, aren't they?
They're interesting. No, not that bad.
Oh, there's the pointy one.
Yeah. And that's, I'm going to take chairs, initiative, prerogative, whatever you want to call it, for a couple of minutes. New England, in my experience, is fairly unique in terms of notice, giving notice, because we know of, the Butters have state-defined legal rights, as in a Butter, and it's literally, you are the property owner next to the applicant. And it doesn't matter if your property is all of twenty feet wide and a neighbor on the other side of you doesn't get notice. A lot of other states give notice as to all property owners within a certain dimension of the appro, of the applicant. I did some, certain radius, or what's called a buffer. In some work I did for a consultant once, I think California, it was two thousand feet from the lot. You get a lot more people who are notified of what goes on in that case. I mean, you have, what, two hundred eighty-three acres?
Two hundred eighty-six.
Eighty-six. And this, this is not criticism to think that. There are a list of approximately eleven or twelve.
Seven, fourteen.
Fourteen, okay. Fourteen of Butters for a lot of that size. If we're dealing with a small little lot of two acres, if I was doing something, I would have one, two, three, four, six people notified. If I wanted to put in a business. That's, that's one of the drawbacks of our method of notice. And I talked to Linda and James, and it is something that we could change if the board wanted to.
Speaking of notice, Mr. Chair, we have a list of people who were noticed as a Butters.
Okay.
If you would like to read that as.
That was better, okay.
The official list.
Thank you.
I must have gone a little further out than you. I think I did two hundred feet.
Okay. Perfect. And?
And that picked up.
That picked up a lot.
Meadow Lane.
More. Okay, which, I will speak for myself. Thank you very much. That's exactly why. Okay, I'll read the list of notified people, just for the record. Howard Hill, Colonel Rockwell, Catherine Johnson, Bliss and Malo, I believe, Malo, Gregory LeBlanc, Donald Carlson, Angela Adcock, Dave DeSignant, Douglas Welcome, Daniel Fletcher, Stephen Anthony, Scott Drummond, Yankee Clipper Council, Glenn Brackett, Travis Jones, Newman Living Trust, Thomas Johnson, Douglas Babcock, Wallman Revocable Trust, Avril Family. Wallman Revocable Trust, Avril Family Revocable Trust, Eileen McGrannigan...
McGrannahan.
McGrannahan, thank you. Dennis Savoy, Raymond Pellerin, Vincent, Robert Vincent, Lawrence Ritchie, Jason Hunt, Bailey &amp; Co. Incorporated and the town of Northwood. Mr. Goudreau.
Those are just...
Copies. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, butters list had been read, thank you for your patience on that. What you got for us?
So, after the workshop meeting, I've got ten sets of amended plans that have north arrows, corrected scales, and basically a note on the location page.
Why don't you pull out three for the town? Your copies for the town, is that right? So that they don't get dog-eared and you can pass around, or pass around...
We can just pass them around the table and if it actually ticks all of the boxes that I had and there are no conditions, we'll just make sure that we grab three copies.
Okay. I was trying to keep it from being dog-eared. I think if we share, you can pass out three, four, five. Keep one for yourself. If you, if you, there's one for each pair of us. That's okay. Is there one for each of us or one for each pair?
It looks like enough now.
Okay. Just double checking, no, thank you. I always like to leave one, is that right, tend to write on them?
I apologize, my printer started to blow up before the meeting, so.
So this would supersede anything on the older one here?
Yes.
Okay.
And all of the changes have been clouded.
Okay. Griffin Gulf Road? Never knew that, I always thought it was Gulf Road.
Five Theophilus, Griffin, and seventeen eighty-one. Boo of Texas.
Okay.
Griffin was the name of the individual or the family.
Lived in the bottom of the Gulf.
By the way, maybe David could do it or just suggest the changes?
Sure.
So that I can spot those rather than...
Yep.
I'm gonna have a tough time spotting them myself.
Pardon?
I say for me to look for the changes, I mean just it'd be easier for you to point them out or...
Well, they're all clouded.
They're clouded, he said.
Yeah.
Like a little puffy cloud around them.
Okay.
The edges of the drawings.
The bumpy ones.
Yeah, the bumpy stuff. If you look on...
Just to note, Joe, most of them are superficial changes, labels, things like that. Nothing that I've seen as a change to the actual plan itself and what you had looked at.
Okay, so it is just those, alright.
If you look at the second to the last page, that'll give you a good example of what's, what's been changed. I had to laugh because when you said cloud, I'm like thinking shading. And I'm like, it's black and white, that's gonna be really hard to see.
Instead of a cloud.
Where the trees?
That's exactly what I thought, that's why I was, I was gonna ask him to pull it up.
Little fluffy clouds. How about... But that makes it much easier to read. Kudos for that.
They're pretty pictures.
Yep. Okay. Those are untouched copies, but, so, yeah, go ahead.
Perhaps can just throw out a few questions?
Sure, go ahead.
You showed, and I assume the, these are the tents, the wooden buildings here that are to replace the tents or...
Yes.
Or what exists now? Or don't exist because they're deteriorated or whatever. The, these are to be, these come as kits or something and then they're fabricated.
From Jamaica cabins, make of Vermont.
Okay.
The Florida house is quite lovely.
Is that one?
Yes. I want one too.
Stumps are bigger than the trees. What's this?
There's a subtle change that I did on the plan. I went out to the site and originally I had taken five tent lots and put the five buildings right where those tent lots were. After going to the site and trying to accomplish some visual effects, as you drive into that site, they're looking to try to do, you know, create that grouping type of thing. So, the building count and size is the same, just the locations are a little bit more defined with what'll probably actually happen.
Okay.
So, I'll ask a few more, so if anybody's saying anything here. There, all the toilet and bath facilities are central buildings or central location.
Look at the second from last page and there's at the very top of the building.
Existing latrine.
Yeah, existing latrine.
Existing latrine. But that's, is that true of the, any of the other campsites they use, either this or...
There are nine, yeah, there are nine campsites at Watutka. Six of the, or seven of them are flush latrines that go into a vault that we pump. One of them is a clivus and there's one that is an old pit latrine.
Is what's the last you said?
Pit latrine.
Pit latrine. Okay, so, and so the buildings themselves, these camps, these new buildings, don't have any facilities and are not meant to?
No.
And from the looks of it, doesn't look like they'll have electric. Maybe in the future.
That's in the future, yeah.
In the future.
Is this, is this because... I'll go ahead and say this. Scouts getting a little software that you need nicer for them?
No, let's not go there.
It's not so much the scouts, it's the parents.
The parents, okay.
Actually, that's actually true, it's mostly, it's mostly demand from the parents. Scouting is also going co-ed. And there's, although with the site capacity, there is also a demand for parents to leave their kids in our camp longer. That doesn't change the capacity of the camp. So dealing with the green canvas tents for a week period of time is something that parents can barely accept. If I'm gonna leave my son there for two or three weeks, they, they want a little bit more serious housing and it's the way of the world. But it's also, in two thousand nineteen, will be co-ed, will have boys and girls in camp.
It'll be the scouts, I think is the proper title.
Actually, they're going to use the term BSA.
BSA, okay.
Like Kentucky Fried Chicken became KFC because they didn't want us to talk about chicken.
Within the letter that was written by Tom Johnson's the butter. He has made a little bit of an additional request that I'd like the board to consider when we're kinda talking about this.
Okay. Uh, let me read the letter and to the record then.
Mr. Chair, if I may, this would probably be a good time to open the public hearing.
Sure.
If you're going to...
Good point. Yeah, since we have a butter here. Or, yeah, notify, notify, okay. I'll open the public hearing for case eighteen dash oh four. To any member of the public who is present. Hearing none, I'll read, "We received a letter from Tom and Marge Johnson of forty-seven Meadow Lane, Northwood. Dear Plin, no date. Dear Planning Board members, please accept this email as my testimony during the public hearing in this case. Since I am unable to attend this evening, my wife and I are in..."
Could I just see, that isn't the email. I'm sorry to interrupt, but there was personal information that shouldn't be read.
Okay.
Is that the thing I printed out?
Yes. I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Okay.
The email...
Yes, okay.
That's what, that's copy and paste, I'm making...
Oh, yes, and I made the mistake of, of concatenating the sentence. I can, okay, anyway. "I am unable to attend this evening, my wife and I are in support of this application that the BSA are pursuing with you this evening. We are the closest year-round residents at forty-seven Meadow Lane, map two twenty-four, lot ten-nine, to this particular campsite and one twelfth, deed and owners of the open space lot, map two twenty-four dash ten dash double not. According, therefore a director butter. We are, original owners have lived and have lived next to the camp since October of two thousand one. The scout camp has been an excellent neighbor, providing a wonderful program and natural environment for the education of the region's youth. The camp operates year-round, however, even during the course of their busy summer camp programs, we have never experienced any negative issues with any campers or adult leadership. The camp is a haven for wildlife and nature with old-growth timber with old beautiful trails. The entire camp, the trails and camping sites are well-maintained. Eliminating canvas tents on platforms and building some small structures is a great idea and will provide an increased measure of public safety for sheltering campers and visitors during our frequent summer storms. I understand this pre-existing use in camp may predate local Northwood zoning and I commend the BSA for seeking site plan review through the planning board. I would hope that this nonprofit organization has granted all waivers requested so that they can use whatever funds they are able to raise to continue to provide an excellent camping educational experience and scholarships for our region's youth. May I respectfully suggest that whatever motion slash approval is granted by your board tonight for this one campsite includes an approval condition, perhaps for up to ten other prototype campsites over the next five years, without coming back to the planning board. Perhaps a requirement to merely send Northwood land use staff an updated specific campsite memo with future improvements during that prototype window. This PV approval process adds expense and delays in moving forward on safety improvements and as the local BSA raises funds, it would help expedite adding additional camp cabins for additional public safety and other remote campsites. Thank you for your considerations, Tom and Marge Johnson, forty-seven Meadow Lane, Northwood." Okay.
That one, like I think you referred to that before, but that one individual is not shown on the butters?
On the original butters list, that was included in the application, they are not, but they did receive notification. That was the second list that I read.
No, I can just say, where are they on the...
They're in the Meadow Lane, established subdivision.
To the left.
The right there.
He's on the left hand of those two.
Yep. I would respectfully disagree when one point of that letter that, it is fun to sit in a tent during a thunderstorm. Would I wanna do it for two weeks? No. Just once, one night is fine. But you gotta be on a mountaintop. Okay. And you had something you wanted to address with that Mr. Johnson's letter?
I think that the key to that whole letter is the request to set a precedence with this meeting so that if they continue to replace tent platforms with buildings, that there's not a planning, we have board review requirement. Tom's suggestion was just put some limits on it just because that's what you're a little bit more aware of ordinances than I am.
Yep. And we have, well, maybe not we have, you have a overall site, not a, maybe not a site plan, master plan drawing of the camp as to what's where?
We are in the process of building a site master plan.
Okay.
That is going to be for the next twenty-five years.
Okay.
And that process is ongoing and everything could be a year, maybe a little more before that's completed. But I think we have provided... Shows where the existing buildings are.
Yeah, the second page of the...
Right.
This, it's not a master plan, but at least it's a location of the existing camps. So this is a very small portion of their master plan for the twenty-five-year plan.
Right.
I can say to that in the planning, Watutka has always been laid out as sort of like a fishing village that we have a lot of backwoods acreage, which is now in conservation easement. So it will always remain that part, about half of the property, a hundred and eighty acres in easement. And there, I do not foresee that we'll be adding additional sites, but just upgrading the existing profile. Currently, our limitation for growth is not the number of campsites, but our dining hall capacity.
Your what?
Dining hall capacity.
Dining. Yeah. And that remains the same and...
Yes.
This project will not add any capacity, additional capacity to the camp.
Correct.
So, okay, looking real quick, I don't know if this is, maybe just maybe you can tell me the number. The Shawna Wanda campsite camp, but one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. How many campsites are there of this sort that have tents that would be replaced? That you would like to replace with the...
Not all of them and certainly not all at once, that we do plan to provide a mixture, you know, of housing. This particular site is for individuals that come to the camp without a troop. The other sites are, you know, a group housing kind of situation with a scout master takes his kids specifically for a week. So that will continue to evolve, but I suspect that we will have always a mixture. Group sales or troops coming to camp as a troop is an important part of our business, but we think that the growth in our business is also going to be a shift to individuals for longer stays.
How many, is it the same or does it vary a little bit, how many tents?
Probably average around twenty-seven, twenty-eight, some go as high as thirty-six.
Per site?
Per site. Some are, some are a little bit less, but it's probably an average twenty-seven, twenty-eight per site.
So this one's a small, very small site compared to the other?
Well, they're still keeping some tents in this one though.
There's an existing plan that shows sixteen camp, tent sites in that one half-acre area that we're calling Shannon Wanda. On the existing plan?
To our, our planned capacity for housing in the Shannon Wanda campsite is twenty-six. At a hundred percent occupancy, which we really count on eighty percent occupancy.
Twenty-six campers?
There is an existing cabin on that site?
Yeah.
So it looks like five... Yes. So for Shawna Wanda in specific, it looks like five cabins and then an additional six or seven tent platforms remaining?
Well, four of them are cabins, one of them's the greenhouse.
So would you be replacing those others? The other tents, I'm sorry?
So the cabins hold four to six people? So they're different sizes from that? So that our plan would be to phase out the, the tent platforms entirely from that campsite eventually. Could we add another building to it? Yes, that's possible, that we would request to put in another building at a future period of time if we needed it. But the limitation there is for us, state regulations and Boy Scout regulations, is the capacity of the latrine. And the capacity of the latrine is probably thirty-six.
So this, this site is related to that existing latrine that you referred to there?
Yes.
Okay, and the objective would be to eventually, if possible, replace the rest of these tent sites that I see. Are these tent, these tents, they have the same occupancy physically?
No, they're two-person tents.
So theoretically, then one building can replace two or three tents.
Correct. Not a one, you're gonna swap them?
Yeah, okay.
Minimally two.
Okay. Okay.
Some of them will be built, which you can't do in a tent, in the tents we have.
These are wall tents, are they, the ones that?
Yeah, they're wall tents, yeah, they're from the Civil War.
With the flaps?
With the flaps.
Yep.
Easy access, easy access for mosquitoes, yeah.
I can't do this.
One of the things that I'm considering, and again, it's just me, is that I'll use the word condition, it's not a condition, it's just for conversation.
Sure.
That I'm okay with the idea of having essentially an admin decision, or town staff administrative decision.
Well, there's a problem with that. The notice was not for anything, in other words, we can't go beyond what was publicly noticed.
Right. Yeah, I know that, but I'm thinking, I want, because we're addressing the long-term aspects of it, whether it's part of this case or not, I always want to get some idea where, what are my thoughts of it, and bounce it around the board, because it might, most likely will require another application, but it's planning on planning, how about that?
Are we talking future changes outside of this?
Yes.
How, how we structure that?
It was brought up, it was brought up by Ina Butter, it was brought up by Mr. De Signet, and we're talking about it now. But I want to sort of sketch out a process that we can use for this, moving forward, because I'm of, I agree, I, you know, I don't want to have you come in for, oh, we're gonna do, you know, campsite number seven now, and replace
Right.
thirty-four tent sites with, with, you know, fifteen or five or whatever buildings, and we've done it before, and, you know, I gotta, you gotta draw it up and sign it, and go through the notice and blah, 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 and do that sometimes. I'd rather not see that. But my condition, again, this is just me, and this is a draft, I would like the town to receive a copy of the master plan. And if you, even if it's a matter of saying, as pieces are approved, it doesn't have to wait for, you know, that you've got A through Z items covered. If you, as your group, or however the, the BSA approve, you know, the draft for a date, or, you know, three sections, or five sections, or whatever, send a copy to the town, that way we have it, and as you then would notice, condition two, again, as a draft, would be that you pick a site to do your, your cabins on. We're gonna pick night, and then part of the master plan would, or I'm assuming that they're all named. Okay, this time, we're, we did, we're doing Shawna Wanda now, we're doing, what's another one?
Ipanapi.
Yeah, that one.
Ipanapi.
That one. You're doing that one for this time, and we'd like to do that within a period of, you know,
Sure.
the summer of two thousand and nineteen, or whatever. Again, after we receive the mass, the notice of the master plan, that you do a we put a limit on, or you put a limit on the number you're doing? Two or three sites per year? I think that would be fair. The reason for, at least this is my desire for that, is that it does, if there is a, and this is a sort of the third point, is that, that those changes would not be so rapid that we could not call for, or have town staff call for a review of the planning board? For us to say, wait a second, you know, things are much different than either in your master plan or what we wanted. You're putting in either, you know, too many buildings, or I don't know what it would be, what the conditions would be.
So they still have to call, what's that, what's the training?
I'm feeling, yeah, I'm feeling concerned about where this is going.
Okay.
Um, currently, the way I interpret Northwood's zoning ordinance, site and subdivision regulations, town staff doesn't have the ability to approve anything administratively.
Correct.
Um, and I don't think you can change that i- in any way, in an application, or can, you can't as a board
It would be
tell us for this site that we can do that. I, you would need to change the regulations.
Okay.
Um, I think this application is a great opportunity to think about what we consider to be a major, or a minor, or a minimal impact application. There might be some opportunity to discuss a category of applications that could be approved administratively, whether it's by individual town staff, or by a technical review committee that might consist of the planner, the land use administrator, and the building inspector. But I don't think that that is something that we should be discussing within the context of an application before the board. I think one thing that would get us that result would be if we had that entire master campsite plan that included illustrations of, these are the sites that we would want to renovate, these are what those sites would look like. So possibly, as part of this planning process, they can be a little bit more detail-oriented to each site, and I would consider that to be one application that could be submitted that is showing what each site would look like.
That's exactly.
That might be a major site application, but I would consider that to be the last site application they would need to file until they differ from what that shows.
So if we were to
Like a phasing.
Right, right, it doesn't necessarily mean that they all need to be installed at the same time.
Right.
It means you have site plan approval for all of them, and all you would need to do is clear with Dale then, whatever permitting or inspecting he's doing for this site, he would probably treat it the same way on a site-by-site basis. And he would look back, is that on the site plan you have? Yep, it's good, and he can go and do his permitting.
I think we're, we're thinking along the same lines, just the language was different.
Right.
So the, the idea was not that it would come to town staff, it would be more, staff would be notified as a decision. Even if I said it wrong.
At the time of the permitting?
Yes, at the time of the permitting, and not part of this application.
We would have a site plan on file.
Yes.
And then it would just be a matter of getting the necessary building permits, or electrical permits, or plumbing permits, or what have you, to match up with the site plan that has been approved by the board.
And it could be as part of your master plan, and as part of our application, it would be that the, try it again, Ipanapi?
Ipanapi.
Ipanapi, not too, not too far off.
It's a palindrome.
Okay, if, if an api is being done, the, the intended timeframe for two thousand and nineteen, twenty, or, you know, I don't even know if that matters for, you know, when you schedule it for it, for, you know, you call it phase two, phase three, phase, up to phase nine.
Are we, are we looking at this, this individual one right now that's before?
We are looking at the individual one, but we're discussing a separate one.
I heard, I know, I heard that.
Okay. Just as a, just as, to give the
Yeah, but is, are we considering this one as a minimal impact?
Yes.
No.
Or, sorry.
This one is, since technically they're making changes to the exterior of the site, this does not meet the qualifications for a minimal impact. Again, something that we can reconsider when we figure out what constitutes a minimal impact. So what we have discussed with the applicant is the same thing that we've discussed with other applicants who just missed that bar. This is a minor site plan application with a few waiver requests, essentially to exempt some items that we wouldn't normally require in a minimal impact case. So the waivers that have been requested, um, and I will say, in the applicant's favor, what we have received is definitely a little bit better than what I was expecting when we were talking about this list of waivers. So I wanted to thank them for all of their work as part of this. That list of waivers is to request, or to accept aerial imagery of the subject campsite in lieu of an existing conditions plan. I think we can approve that as is, but I think that we do essentially have an existing conditions plan as part of this. B, to accept hand-drawn site plans or editorial imagery in lieu of plans prepared by a professional engineer. Again, these are catted-out plans, but this Mr. De Signet is not a professional engineer. These plans will depict only the subject campsite and meet the standards of the minimal impact site plan, except that abutting properties will not be labeled due to the scale of the plan. C, to accept an existing site map and/or aerial imagery in lieu of the required location plan. Those were all under section seven B. A waiver to section nine D, stormwater drainage, to forego the submission of a drainage plan. And section nine Q, sidewalks, to forego the construction of sidewalks into the site. Speaking of things that we might want to talk about when we do zoning amendments this year, we might want to think about whether we even want that section anymore.
We definitely don't.
We discussed other items such as roads and access, water supply, sanitary sewage disposal, and off-street parking. Based on the materials that we've received, each of those sections require that the applicant will, quote, "make adequate provision" for those things, so they don't require submission of particular plans or particular information. Essentially, they just need to show the board enough that the board is comfortable. So I felt in my discussion with the applicant that they were making the case that they had made adequate provision based on what this is, a campsite for each of those items. So I advised the applicant that they did not need to submit waiver requests for any of those sections. That was one thing that I asked the board to weigh in on at the workshop, that if they felt strongly that waiver requests should be submitted for those items, that we could give the applicant a time to submit them prior to tonight, and the board seemed okay with moving forward with the application as is.
So you're saying there that the, those last items you just referred to were adequately met as an existent, don't need a waiver request, really?
Uh, yeah, I'm not trying to predetermine the board's ability to determine that they are in fact adequate, but I, my interpretation is that the applicant is making the case that they are adequate, and that the board has enough information to decide whether they are.
Would, so this individual, if, if, I like the idea of, of, of an overall master plan, or whatever you might like to call it here, but an overall plan looking ahead for, to implement this kind of thing at the camp. That would be nice if the town had it, I, I agree with that, and it would orient all the future proposals. I'm guessing, though I don't know, and, you know, even your own goals may change along the way, but if you, if you each time are going to improve these campsites in the same manner, it seems to me, this is a, it is a, call it, not quite a minimal impact, but it's, as we've said, or even if you call it a minor site plan, we're pulling off some of the requirements of that minor site plan by recognizing either waivers or really an existing condition where the minor site plan doesn't apply, so. It's, it would, to me, the sense of this would be to make, keep it simple. And I think the master plan or some version of that would be nicer, obviously organize things for yourself, but fundraising or anything else.
Absolutely.
But, but for us, it would help, and so as it came before us, it would, would be somewhat easy to look at and say, gee, it's kind of the same thing they did before, or there's an extra this, or an extra that, and move ahead.
I think James's point is, is well-taken, is that even if it's a major site plan for, once you get your master plan
Well, there, I'm just wondering, would, would we require it then, because you referred to a major site plan?
I think that's what James said before, correct me if I'm wrong, is that you would, when you get your master plan in, or done, apply as either minor or major, or whatever, however, town staff says it needs to be applied. Present it as a phased aspect, you know, however many phases, whatever timeframe.
And I, I do want to point out that that's the approach that we've taken with Camp Yavna. They had a, a large overarching site plan on file, and then they would, if they were differentiate, or changing it on specific areas, they would file something that was very specific to a location.
Right.
It's somewhat of a fluid thing, too, because if you've got a sponsor or donor that has something in mind that he wants built.
Right.
And it just may not happen to fall within the steps of a plan, and, you know, we would have to file something at that point, but that's
Yeah, I think that, yeah, I, I think that, you know, we very much appreciate everybody's concern of trying to, you know, streamline this and set a direction. And that, but, you know, the institution actually pays me, it's Children's Hospital in Boston, and we do master plans with the town, with the city, and, and all the time. And we have these plans, and then we have annual updates.
Right.
So to say where we are in proposal, so it's a, it's a letter, in our case, to the BRA that says, okay, we told you this is our plan, it's still our plan, but our funding didn't come through for this, but we are looking to resubmit in that period of time.
Sure.
I think that type of dialogue benefits us all, and, you know, organizationally, you know, that why I am so keen on, from the Boy Scouts point of view, is, is that the volunteer structure of the Boy Scouts of America is fluid and it changes.
Definitely.
And say, okay, let's have a master plan, and that becomes the bible, and when we need to deviate from that, there's a process that's in place. So my, my major push for that, as the camping chairman of the council, is so that we have that kind of continuous vision, so it's not that haphazard.
Right, right, and that's why I want to push you to have a master plan on file with the town.
That benefits us.
The way I, the way I can see, and I want to end up the topic of this topic of conversation, so we can get the, back to the application, is that if you have a, a master plan, and it's, that's been approved, and you want to change it, that then would come under either a site plan amendment, or theoretically, yeah, site plan amendment would, would work. Or we could consider doing a minimal impact. Either way, again, a relatively minor hurdle to do that, and I'm even thinking of other methods, but we haven't gotten there yet.
Well, we put to you guys to figure out all of it.
You got, you got a while to do your master plan, I think that's when it'll be triggered, is when you will, when you get to that point, then you can say, we'll talk about it, can certainly approach the town when you get closer. So, okay, let's go back to the application.
Yeah, well, I was, as it is, I, first of all, I'm, I'm speaking just from what I heard before. I agree with James, or at least his, his conclusion or attitude towards the waivers, or, or not using the waivers because they weren't even necessary.
Right.
I think that all the things requested, they're using aerial, aerial view as a replacement for whatever, is fine. All of those things, I'm good with it. I'm trying to keep in mind, this is a pretty simple situation overall, this is a campsite, and it's meant, I guess in the end, not to look like a, a village of some formal kind, it's a, I would imagine that these cabins, looking at them, they're obviously a lot nicer than tents, but the whole idea is to keep this as a simple, absolute campsite, and I just, and, and since they are just places for bunks, I guess, ultimately, it's a pretty simple, straightforward thing of one thing replacing another that I have no problems with at all. The access to it and all of that kind of thing should be kind of natural anyway. Sidewalks would be absurd to me in a situation like this, I just, I don't know, as mentioned.
What, a sidewalk in the woods?
Yeah, where, where's the walk in the woods, if you've got sidewalks? So, anyway, I, I think it's pretty straightforward, I, I'm ready to go along with this as it is, as a I, I'm ready to go along with this as it is, as a, in a sense, a minor site plan with significant allowances, if that's what we want to call it, or a minus, or a minimum impact, but, and then with a provision of some kind, just to reflect what you've already discussed, that there'd be a follow-up with, which I guess the applicant is already very amenable to, to create a master plan of some use as we, as this goes forward. Maybe they'll be doing this again.
Yeah, I think that's a separate issue.
We can't tie that to his application.
I, I think that's a separate issue. I think we have the understanding, and we've talked about the process, but I wouldn't suggest making it a condition on this application.
Okay, okay. No, yeah, I used the word condition, yeah, it wasn't right, so, yeah.
Question as far as, is there vehicle access to Shawna Wanda?
Emergency vehicle.
Emergency only? Okay. Just, just curious. That's sort of what I thought based on the width of the, the access, but.
Most of the vehicles that come in there, they, they're up top.
We go up, we put them up top, there's a parking lot below, near the service center.
I know.
During the week, you know, our biggest traffic danger, parents are dropping off or picking up, so a couple of hours on Saturday, a couple on Sunday. We, we very much discourage vehicle movement during the week of camp, and it's mostly service vehicles or emergency vehicles.
Because there's no sidewalks?
Because there's no sidewalks, and there never will be as long as I like.
That 170-foot kind of access through the woods is going to get enlarged a little bit so that they can wheel up the kits.
Sure.
And that'll also, I went up in my pickup, but you wouldn't want to go in your car. And so that'll get enhanced a little bit so that we can get.
Not the, the idea.
Is that what you're calling the Shawna Wanda entrance?
Yes.
Such?
Yeah. It was more the idea of, and you answered it, is, are you, are, and I, I made the assumption that parents park at the, in the parking lot and camper walk into the site rather than being dropped off at the site, or at the actual campsite. I'm just curious. Okay. We need to deal with waivers?
Yes, please.
Would it be legit to deal with them as items, as three separate items, one, two, and three?
Yes, I would suggest motion for number one, motion for number two, motion for number three.
Thank you.
Motion for one.
For?
Second.
Okay. Requested waiver.
You'll have to restate them if you want, but.
I don't need to restate them.
You described it earlier, yeah.
We have a motion for, to approve the waiver for Section 7, Roman 7B, 1A, 1B, and 4, as requested by the applicant. And a second, we have motion by Mr. McCaffrey, second by Ms. B. Smith. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of granting the waiver to Section 7, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, those abstaining.
Motion for number two.
Second.
Okay, so same motion maker and second. This is on stormwater. Discussion.
Well, the only thing I already said, I think, I don't see stormwater, this is, you're in the woods, yeah, you got, you know, kids out and whatever, doing stuff, but the stormwater runs off as it does in wooded places, and it's supposed to be natural, and I don't see messing around with that. And all you're doing is going from a tent to a building, similar footprint, maybe a little bit, a little bigger, but I don't see it changes much of anything, and the natural part of that should be left alone, as far as I'm concerned.
So Mother Nature did a good job?
Yeah, pretty much. Usually it does.
You know what I'm saying, Joe? You and I, you and I all recognize this. It's not wise to fool with Mother Nature.
I wouldn't go on top of the mountain, but I would go along if you're, I don't know.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of granting a waiver on Section 9D, stormwater drainage, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, those abstaining, okay.
Motion for three.
Second.
Sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay, same motion, same second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of not needing sidewalks, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Not going to bother with those opposed or abstaining. Okay. So we have the motion, the waivers. We're not going to include anything about the master plan, we've discussed that outside of this application. The town staff is good with all the plan changes?
We, so I've reviewed the changes in Dave's plan, I have no conditions to recommend.
Okay.
This might be that rare beast's straight approval.
Why make a motion to approve them?
Second.
This, this application, I'm sorry.
Discussion on approval.
18-04.
Thank you. The motion is to approve the application of case 18-04. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, those abstaining. Okay.
We have to ask the chairman if he will notify these folks that Dale will not issue the building permit until he receives the notice of decision.
Which I will get to on Tuesday, as quickly as I can.
And he won't be back before then anyways.
Good luck.
But you can sign him tonight.
Have you got the cabins on the way?
Okay.
Have you got the cabins on the way?
At all?
Don't ask them that.
Are the cabins on the way? Yes, the cabins have been on.
Yeah, well, good. I mean, this is getting close.
If you got a screw gun.
You're more than welcome, right?
When does the camping season start?
July 8.
July 8.
One suggestion I would make is that if, in the process of working on your master plan, if you have any questions about what the town might want to see, or how you proceed, certainly ask the town staff. They can easily forward requests on to us, we can all, we're more than happy to, to discuss it. My suspicion is that all the Ts are going to be crossed and all the Is are going to be dotted in advance, but we certainly want to work with you, not against you, and I don't see that as happening.
We very much appreciate it.
Yeah. Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for keeping scouts alive.
Okay. Mr. Chair, we do have a few staff items.
Sure.
I think while Linda's getting her stuff up, I'm going to pass around the master plan materials that I brought. My intent is not to discuss these tonight. My intent is to hand you these to review for the June workshop, at which point I would like to discuss them. The only section that I've given you is the vision section, but we discussed sort of working through these section by section so that we can eventually get to an adopted master plan. So the comments that are still on there are mine. I have made a few suggested changes to the draft as it stood. I have tracked those, so please read through this and bring your suggestions to the next meeting.
Can you?
And by read through this, I mean outside of this meeting, because we do still have some things to do.
Yes.
To move along.
Can you email the draft?
Yeah, absolutely.
So that we can add comments offline?
Yep.
That'd be good, okay.
And then the other comment that I wanted to bring up in this section, it's probably about time that we should get the CIP ball moving.
Yeah.
If we want to have that done prior to budget season. So I think what Linda and I discussed was staff can at least send out the materials to all departments and ask them to send their stuff back, and staff can start compiling that.
Okay.
So maybe we should talk at one of the June meetings about how we would actually want to have the review and the compiling of that happen, whether it's a committee or what have you.
Does staff have a copy of the approved CIP?
From last year?
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Okay.
I would hope so.
At town, Ms. LaFond asked me for a copy, or sent me a copy of Joe Gunter's draft, and I have neglected, unfortunately, slap my hand, Ms. Pudrow, to get her a copy, and I'll, we'll probably do so tonight.
Who was that?
Kate.
Kate.
Oh.
She asked me for a copy of the CIP for the lib, some of the library projects, I think, and she sent me what she had, but it was not stuff that I think was improved. And I have neglected to, I haven't been home enough to email it to her, so I won't.
Okay, I mean, I can see later on, I'll just see.
I'll make sure, I'll just send you both a copy.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
Your stuff?
I have two, 67441 applications. I'm gonna, I'm gonna precede that with a little statement.
Okay.
The Board of Selectmen have changed their guidelines on processing.
Okay.
The new process will be that you, we will not be processing any of these that are not received on the first of the month, along with all our regular applications. I was asked on these two, and there's reasons for them, to try to fit these in, but these will be the last ones that will be received out of sync with our regular process. So normally, we'll get them for the first, you'll see them at the workshop, and then you can make your decisions on the fourth Thursday of the month. One of the things that's in the new guidelines is that if there are no changes to a building in any dimension, but there's renovations or changes to a building that is on the legal footprint of what's been permitted, or accessory uninhabited residential permit, such as a garage, a deck, a porch, a shed, those will be, will come before the planning board for their review and comment, but the building inspector will be able to sign off. Will look at your comments, and then he will sign off on those minor ones. So those ones that he will be signing off on likely will not need the board's review to the level of those that will be, say, a new building on a classics road that's two miles in, that will be going before the Board of Selectmen, because they will be requiring an engineer-stamped plan for an emergency lane to that location. So both of these are the minor ones that will be reviewed by the board, because the statute requires any building permit to be reviewed by the board under that statute, unless it's on a planning board plat, or a couple other things, but 99% of them need to be on a plat. Neither of these are, the first one is for a deck, and that is on 6 Pine Street, where were you able to find it? So this is Harvey Lake Road, you see the blue square? That's how close it is to Harvey Lake Road, to the, to the town-maintained road. It is for a deck only, no variances were needed, because it's a resident, an accessory structure to an existing residence.
Say that one more time? Please.
They have provided the agreement and release.
Is that a small lot, a joint, about the road, or is that part of the?
There is a, a small lot beside it that touches the road.
So the lot itself doesn't butt the road out?
Yeah. The lot itself is the one that blew.
Correct, and it gets us access, which is important, for 674, as the access is on a private road. It's a 10-by-24 deck onto an existing home. So the board would just need to comment.
Well, where were the, can you point to where the?
Some of the comments that were typically done in Harvey Lake Estates are the board's recommend.
Where's the deck going to be?
It, well, it doesn't really matter where the deck is going to be, because it meets all the zoning ordinances, and this is not about the location of the deck, it's about the access to the property only.
So it has nothing to do with setbacks or anything like that?
No.
Nope.
No.
It looks, looks like if the house is well-hidden by the trees, my guess is that it's right where the, the lot label is.
It says it's 29 feet from the property line on the, and it's going to be for a front entry. But this is really about the access to the lot.
It's just because it enters into the conflict, or the?
They have not provided any indication of, other than that they are signing the, the agreement release, which does state that they will maintain the road.
Up a portion in front of their house.
A portion in front of their house, right.
Okay. Any comments?
That is close to Harvey Lake Road, and that part of Oak Street is well-maintained. Is it Pine?
Pine Street.
It's, that part of it is well-maintained.
I seem to remember that saying.
The only thing in past history, if you want to add it to the, just for consistency, is that the board has always recommended that homeowners should be encouraged to create road maintenance associations.
You know, this is kind of.
I mean, it's just a comment, that's all it is.
Well.
Because the deck isn't going to change the fact, what would concern us in terms of access? Is it whether, in any real terms, is safety for emergency equipment, right?
Correct.
That's one of our big issues.
Correct.
The deck isn't going to involve that at all, it's not going to have any impact on that one way or the other, it's just going to be added to this already-existing building, which is already there.
Yep.
The emergency equipment can get to it now or not, and that's the way it is. So the decks are going to change anything, it's, I, I, that's why I said it's kind of silly.
Well, you're free to write no comments if you want.
That sounds like a suggestion for the comments. That sounds like a suggestion for what to write.
No, well, you could say it's, as silly as this is.
Close proximity or?
I think it's.
Blessings on it.
I agree.
You agree, what, no comment, or?
I think that, that I agree with what Joe's saying.
It's not something that we need to.
It doesn't need, yeah.
I would suggest, though, as, as we have, want to do in the past, is put the comments saying that, about the road, road maintenance agreement. That way, anybody, or anybody, any applicant, to reinforce it, just that way.
Can't agree with that against us.
Okay. That, we're watching. Is this the actual application?
Yes, if you could just, if you want to just write in there, it's fine.
I think what I have to say that.
The board encourages the formation of a road maintenance association.
No, no comments on the deck, the board, I'm drafting this in my head, no comments as far as the addition of the deck, the board encourages the homeowners to, about the road of, road maintenance agreement. Okay.
Yeah, sounds good.
Good.
The board continues to express its ongoing concern about maintaining road access in this community.
What other scintillating tidbit do we have to do?
We've got another 67441, and we've got a fire station to talk about briefly. We've got another 67441, and we've got a fire station to talk about briefly.
Okay, thank you. And next one is Eight Park, Park Avenue, I think, isn't it? Park Street, Park Avenue?
Park Avenue.
And I'll read a little bit here. Hundred-and-forty-two feet from Lake Shore Drive, the State Road, the second house on the right from Lake Shore Drive. The driveway is a hundred, I keep saying the same thing. The driveway is a hundred-and-fifty-one feet from the State Road. The paved driveway is, oh, driveway, it's a road, is thirty-seven feet, nine inches long? Oh, that's their driveway. And fifteen feet wide at its narrowest and eighteen feet six at its widest. That's their driveway.
So this, the squiggly line adjacent to the, that's Park Street or Park Avenue?
Well.
Just double-checking.
Yes, the squiggly line is Park Avenue.
Okay.
And if you go down just a little, if you move that up, there we go. That's Lake Shore Drive, the town beach is right over to the right.
Okay.
Hundred-and-forty feet. Now, and this one is an interior remodel. There's no change to the exterior.
Would, as far as the procedure on this goes, would, where does, would a conversion from seasonal to year-round, if they didn't change the exterior dimensions, come in?
That would come in, in this particular case, would have to go to the zoning board.
Okay.
Because it's a non-conforming site. But as long as they don't do anything to the outside of it, increase anything, increase, seasonal to year-round is an increase in use.
Okay. Just don't, just curious.
And in this case, they actually, their building permit says seasonal to seasonal.
Okay. Just curious.
Mm-hmm.
So that would reflect, for, I mean, the only thing that might have some real bearing this is a, in addition, by going year-round, you're putting an additional load on well sector.
Correct.
Right, right.
It's removing the seasonal.
Yep. Okay, same, same kind of comments? No, any, no problems with the, the change with the road maintenance agreement? Do they have, does that, that's what, the Cove? That's not the Cove. That is the Cove.
No.
No, that's not the Cove.
No, this is North Shore Park, I believe it's called. He does say in his, that they are working on trying to work with the neighbors to form an association.
Okay.
Apparently, there is one, but it's somewhat loosely organized, and they are willing to be a part of that.
Okay. I'd just add the same kind of comment.
Okay.
I'll be glad to write it if you want.
If you want to fill that in, and I don't have Dale's copy, but he can write on that one.
Where's the beach you mentioned?
To the right. The pile of sand is.
Where?
You see it?
Put an arrow on it.
Right over there.
That?
Yeah.
Used to be more sand.
What's up here?
I can't make, okay. From here, I can't.
It's about right, yeah.
Erosion happened.
Is some water there or something?
No, really, there used to be a lot more sand.
Oh, water to the right.
Yeah.
There'd be shadows there.
Okay, so that white area is maybe some sand?
Mm-hmm.
That is the sand, yeah.
What there is.
Can you see the wall?
No. No, not in that picture.
Should be well over the wall.
It is a beautiful wall, though.
What else do we have here?
Fire station.
That's it?
Yep.
Beautiful.
It is beautiful, Joe.
You actually have stuff to hand out for that one?
Oh, I have one.
Thing to hand out to them.
And I put it in front of the unit.
On School Street, they did.
Put that out. Not complete.
Okay, next?
He said that if the board feels that they really need to go through this process, we will do it.
Okay.
But she was hoping you would talk to the board and get feedback.
Okay.
All right, so the final thing on our agenda for tonight deals with RSA 67454, which is for governmental land uses. This is in relation to the, where was it, the Narrows Fire Station, where there is going to be approximately a twelve-hundred-foot addition.
That's all right.
This is increasing bathrooms from one to three, and bedrooms from no current bedrooms for onsite firefighters overnight to four, with the intent being that there would probably be one or two people there, maybe three or four nights a week. RSA 67454 exempts governmental land uses from formal review by the planning board. However, for a substantial new use or substantial change in use, they are required to notify either the planning board or the local government, governing body, who may choose to issue or to hold a public hearing. In this case, I was legitimately unsure about whether adding bedrooms was introducing a residential component that would count as introducing a new use to the site. So I suggested that we notify the board, which we have a partially completed application, and it has the site plan materials related to the expansion. The RSA, so we have received notice. The RSA says the planning board may hold a public hearing. So the only thing that we would want from the board tonight is a decision about whether or not you would actually want to have somebody here to present the addition, as if there, this was a site plan review and hold a public hearing at, we would recommend scheduling this for your workshop in June, in two weeks, so we can move through this quickly. The board, if you hold the public hearing, would get to issue non-binding comments and recommendations, but nothing that you would have to say would be binding on the town.
What is the, James, what's the timeframe that the fire department has proposed for this? What are they looking at in terms of?
As soon as possible.
As soon as possible. And do they have any, are they like, well?
I think they're, they've got architects' drawings, and they're really, they're really hopeful to move forward as quickly as possible.
Has this gone before the select board, as far as any public?
It's actually been voted on by the public.
What?
It was.
It was voted on by, it was a warrant.
Well, no, I don't know that. There was no plans back then.
No.
No, there were plans.
Yeah, there were, there were plans. They were at the town meeting.
They had architect drawings and.
At the back table, there were plans.
Okay, stay tuned.
And they did, the chief came last week, and it's going to be placed out to bid. I think they're hoping in the summer.
So the only timeline that the RSA stipulates is that from notice, if we want to have a public hearing, it needs to be within thirty days of when we were notified. And from then, we would have, within sixty days of when we were notified, to get comments back to them. But obviously, understanding that the town wants to move this, we were recommending a two-week turnaround on this, if you would like. If you're satisfied that you have been notified and you don't see a need to issue non-binding comments or hold a public hearing, my reading says you don't have to.
My reading says we don't want to.
The town has voted on it.
If this is already voted on, why do we want to invite people to come in and complain?
Yeah, but I, I don't.
No, thank you.
I don't like the idea of, you know, impeding this or dragging it out once it's kind of more underway than I was aware, actually. So, and, and there's a, there's a real cost to doing that. So is there any, you said the architectural drawings have not been done yet, or they're under?
No, they, there's drawings. Yeah, we have some here.
The architectural drawings?
Mm-hmm.
I thought I heard you say they're underway.
I mean, we don't have the blueprints. We've got a basic rendering here.
Oh.
We wouldn't have blueprints for a.
They were redoing the blueprints. The question was to put two bathrooms upstairs and one bathroom downstairs, so they were switching the bathrooms.
And that's not normally something that we would get as part of an application, anyway.
Right.
So we've got as much as.
Yeah.
There's a profile there, if you want to look at it.
Is the what?
There's a building profile.
Yeah, well, the, yeah, we don't, okay, that's, is there any way that that could be simply posted? Was that available at the town?
Yeah, yeah, it was a back table.
Yeah, and it's a town document, so it's.
The elevation?
A public document, as it is. If anybody is reading these minutes or listening to this meeting and wants to come into the town office and see it, they're more than welcome.
Yeah, I'm just, that's, yeah, sure, but I'm thinking if it were just as visible and available to everybody in terms of just, you know, being able to see it as it goes forward, in the near term, because it won't do any good later when they start building it. But if there was any last thoughts that somebody had, not as a formal process of them being able to interfere with it, but maybe there might be a useful observation that could come out of it. I, I didn't know.
There were offices and training rooms downstairs, and upstairs, there was the bedrooms and.
Yeah, I know, the floor plan is, that to me is something that, you know, people that have some experience doing that, and I'm sure they're getting advice, that's something to work out, and that's, the average person doesn't have any, I don't think, any probably useful thing to say about it. I was just talking, and the reason I was even referring to the profile of the architectural drawing was for the appearance of it, and what.
If I could add a comment.
What that's worth.
I don't, I don't think the building profiles were available at town meeting, just the floor plan at the time, but.
There was a picture.
There was a picture of.
There was?
The back of it, yeah.
Well, okay, then my guess is that probably a lot of people maybe didn't see it. If it was online or something, even, or whatever, you know, that, if that's what they're going.
That's a good thought. I mean, it could be put online.
Primary part of, if I remember correctly, the primary part of the addition is going to be in back.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
So it's not gonna be that visible or?
Well, part of it has to come out the side, if I, no, okay.
The other side of it is simply the role of the planning board would be the typical things that the planning board would be looking at.
They took that part out of the site. The original plan was going to have an additional bay on the side, but costs were astronomical, so they took that out. So in March, we did vote on the, not the third bay, or the fourth bay, whatever.
There's no new bay in that?
No. It's, it's training and a house because the, the rig station isn't safe.
So where are the, there's two, two bathrooms on one level and one bathroom?
There's one bathroom downstairs because for training purposes, when they, they train with EPSCM Department as well. Then the upstairs will have more bathrooms for showers, because they have to have a men's and a women's. And the shower, there's, will be a shower downstairs, because if there's a fire, they have to take a shower before they go home, because sometimes there's toxins on their clothes.
So the question is, do we want to have a public hearing?
Do we what?
Do we want to have a public hearing?
They already had a public hearing for March.
Does the planning board need to have a public hearing?
I don't think so.
Just want to double-check. We need to dot our Ts and cross our Is.
There you go. I got it.
At least one person caught the mistake. Why I said it. We need a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
They're so moved.
The motion is what?
Do not have a public hearing?
Correct.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. B. Smith, second by Mr. Miklowski. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor of not having a public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, most abstaining, okay? No public hearing needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, that did it.
Saved a lot of work.
Yes. Well, I was sort of in the attitude of, if we already have, if we already have architectural drawings and they're going out with a blueprint, it's a little late for a public hearing comment.
The venting system, the exhaust system.
Chair has nothing to report, aside from it is just a reminder that it is not quite summer yet, but that summer is coming up and typically start having issues with quorum, vacation. So if you are making, have no vacation plans where you are missing a planning board meeting, you don't have to tell me, tell Linda or Susan, so that we can plan accordingly, because I can storm on the rest of us, or we can cancel the meeting if we know in advance we're not gonna have enough. I would rather cancel the meeting in advance, so we don't have applicants coming in, waiting for a third, or staff, coming in, waiting for, and only having three board members show, and we can't do anything. So it makes a really bad view of the planning board. Even, yeah. Well, I am, I apologize to them in advance out of the meeting, because we can't have a meeting. And a lot of times, it's an engineer or representative who's on the clock, and then applicants get billed for it, for mileage and time, even if it's, if they get nothing done, you know, that's a waste. Okay, anything else?
And we can always shake the bushes for alternates, if anybody knows of anybody interested in serving as an alternate.
Would be lovely to have, especially in summer. Alternates?
Second meeting in July is the day before the bash.
Last year, we just had to listen to him pounding the fence posts, I mean, the.
Yeah, we had it last year. It always ends up being the Thursday, I think.
Yep. Yeah, I'm not too worried about it. Depends on the applications. We have, we're legally required to have at least one meeting a month. If we don't get any applications in, and for July, we could always consider having the work session as our main meeting, or the second Thursday of the month instead of, as our main meeting instead of the fourth. That works out better for schedule-wise. But let's wait and see on that one. Okay? Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Second. If you vote no, I'm gonna shoot you. Where adjourned at nine twenty-three?